All right, I'd like to call to order the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee Meeting for Monday, July 12, 2021, 3:00 PM. I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Wook.
Chair.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Assistant City Clerk Josh Decker.
Here.
Public, not Public Works Director, Planning Department.
Community Development Director.
That's it, Community Development Director.
No worries, I'm here.
Thank you. And I'm going to assume Brett Marlowe is with the Design Review Board Committee President.
Yeah.
Correct, thank you. Katrina, I apologize, that was stupid. Well, let's do the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes, June 22, 2021.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Denson.
Oh, sorry, aye.
Okay, minutes are approved and we're now waiting for Larry Bradbury for his appointment.
Yeah, and I'll give you a quick rundown on what we're doing with the DRV appointments. We have, you'll see in your packet on the roster, we have two vacancies. All of the, there's six different criteria for the DRV and we can actually appoint from any of those criteria. Today's candidates, we only have two and both of them only fit the criteria of being a planning commissioner. And we can only appoint one person whose only criteria is just being a planning commissioner. So you have two interviews, we have two vacancies, but you can only appoint one of the people that we're interviewing today, so you'll have to choose one.
Thank you, Josh, I appreciate that.
And then today, I just relisted the Design Review Board application announcement, so we'll keep it open until the end of the month and hopefully we'll get somebody who meets one of the other qualifications so we can appoint them next month.
That'd be great. Katrina, is this okay, time to speak to what I think might be missing?
I would defer to Chair Abra Sol regarding that conversation.
Okay.
Certainly, go right ahead, please.
Thank you, thank you Chair. I've been on the DRV for, I don't know, it's almost been a decade or so. And so I've seen different folks on there. And what I really haven't seen is a really good landscape person. And we deal with a lot of site work and a lot of landscape and foliage questions. And I think we could really benefit from having a professional who deals in that realm. So I'm assuming that's probably not going to be someone who's here today for planning, but that other slot available, it'd be really great to leave open the opportunity for a professional in that realm. Thank you.
Can we put any of that kind of criteria on the website that we would be specifically looking for someone in with those kind of things under the Volunteers Wanted?
Yes, we can do that. Chair DeSantis and I emailed last week about, and I completely concur with her assessment of what's needed on the DRV. We are seeing a lot of more site development and redevelopment even pertaining to trees, that we would benefit greatly from having someone with that background. I've reached out to several of my contacts, asking, I don't know, you know, council, you have put out your feelers for that, but also Josh can update the website that we're looking for someone with that specification.
And do we need to have any kind of motion from the Board here to make that happen? Or is that just something administrative can do?
I believe we can do that administratively. So I'll fill Josh in.
Thank you, Katrina.
Seems like on one of our boards and commissions, we have a professional landscaper. It must not be this one, though. It's a woman.
We do. Councilmember Denson, Shannon Grinna is on the Planning Commission. I did reach out to her, asking her to apply.
Would she like to switch?
For this, unfortunately, she, while we were on this meeting, just let me know that along her planning commission commitment, she's moved into a board position with the Washington Association of Professional Landscape Designers. So she doesn't have the extra time to devote at this point.
And I just want to thank also Chair DeSantis for bringing that to our attention.
Thanks for listening.
I just left a message with Mr. Bradbury and I'm not sure if he's having difficulty, but hopefully he gets back to us or finds his way on here.
Have we heard from the second candidate at all? Are they in a waiting room or anything?
No, he's not in the waiting room. They both confirmed with me on Friday, so they should, they should know their way in.
Well, sometimes it's hard to predict the weather four to four or five days in advance and maybe they're scaling.
They're both on planning commission too, so they should be familiar with our Zoom platform.
Josh, is it also correct that in addition to the planning commission, that both of these candidates serve on other committees in addition to planning commission?
Yeah, they do, actually. Tom Brown is on the Civil Service Commission and Larry Bradbury is on the Salary Commission. But the Salary Commission is not met, I don't believe, since Larry's been on there. They only meet every two years.
Is there a limit to how many boards or commissions you can be on?
No.
Well, they might not have time to be on this one.
Who are you guys? We don't usually have two people that don't show up.
No, it seems like it's becoming more common, though.
I guess they don't show when their next chance be.
Well, we would have to schedule a special meeting to interview them or wait until next month, but. That would kind of be up to the discretion of the committee.
So, and these are vacant spots, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I think Nels is with us through the end of the month, so the other one's soon to be vacant, is that right?
Yes, Nels is serving throughout July.
Well, we could go into recess and come back on as soon as we can get ahold of somebody. Want to do that?
Sure, council.
I'm hanging out, whatever.
Okay, we'll pause the recording and start it up as soon as I get somebody.
All right, we will turn now to our Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee Meeting for Monday, July 12. Our 2021 is time is 3:22 and we have our candidate, Tom Brown, for the Design Review Board in participation. Mr. Brown, are you there? If you are there, we are unable to see or hear you. If you can unmute yourself. Were you able to connect with him while he was in the waiting room, Josh?
No, but he should be able to. Let me see if I can help him unmute.
There we are.
Sorry, my enthusiasm.
Mr. Brown, we can see you now, but I believe you're still unmuted.
Okay, you ought to be able to hear me now.
We have you, sir, thank you. Mr. Brown, do you mind if I call you Tom?
No, please do.
Excellent, thank you, sir. If you're quite okay, if we can begin with the questions.
Go right ahead.
Excellent, sir, I'll start off. Please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Design Review Board.
Okay. I've been a member of the Planning Commission for the last two years and also the Civil Service Commission, sort of by accident. But in my service on the Planning Commission, I think I've begun to understand pretty well the planning function in the city. And I agree that it would be worthwhile to have someone on the Design Review Board who's also a member of the Planning Commission. I'm personally kind of fascinated by the opportunity to interface with some of the organizations that are actually interested in, in developing or adding to our city and seeing that side of it. Because for two years and more, really, I've focused on the, the planning function and the development of regulations, code and the rest. I like to take a look at it from the other side at this point and see how it all appears to developers and investors and residents of the city. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
That's member Wook.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Tom, for your service on the Planning Commission. So I have a question for you, and this is right along maybe what you said. Do you have any knowledge of the Design Review Board and its role?
Only what I have picked up by reading the various city documents and by listening to a couple of meetings. I, I think my knowledge is probably similar to the knowledge I had of the planning process two or three years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom, good to see you, Robyn Denson. My question is, do you have any experience reading and interpreting site plans and valuation drawings?
No, I don't. I, my experience was all in the, the technology business and however, I, I'm a quick study and I haven't been, haven't found it to be a problem to learn what I needed to know in new fields over the last 50 years or so.
Okay.
Tom, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the Board?
I think the expertise that I have really comes in the, in the form of judgment and making decisions over a long career. The ability to listen to both sides, pay attention to what people are saying and the belief that, you know, words are important. You need to be able to express what you mean clearly and completely. And that's what I tend to listen for, my, my hearing a story that makes sense and the right questions being asked. So that's, that's the kind of expertise I think I would bring to the DRV.
Thank you.
Asking the right questions is a big, is a big plus, isn't it? That's the key to a lot of things. So, Tom, what do you find special and unique about Gig Harbor?
Well, it's, it's a lovely place to live. And it, it has a great deal of history for such a small town. And I, I do, I think, tend to believe that that history needs to be celebrated and preserved. I also think that development and growth is inevitable and the best thing you can do is to try to manage it effectively. And I'm, I'm all for that. I mean, one of my strengths as a professional was strategic planning and taking a strategic view of things and trying to think beyond the next 30, 90 or 360 days. And I think Gig Harbor needs to put an emphasis on that.
Okay, Tom, the DRV meets on the second and fourth Thursday each month at 5:00 PM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending these meetings?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great.
And Tom, last question, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions for us about the Design Review Board?
You're going to be adding two new members, right?
I believe it's just one, correct me if that's wrong, Josh?
We have two vacancies, but only one that can be filled by planning commissioner.
Got it.
Yeah, so you'll be adding two, two new members at this time?
No.
And I guess the question is, or my, my concern is, are there plans for helping those two new members get up to speed rapidly? And, and I, I guess that's my, that's my issue.
Yeah, so similar to onboarding for our other candidate, our boards and commissions, we will, staff will sit down with each member that would be appointed to the DRV and go through the essential functions and the, can't think of the word right now, but the charter essentially for the Design Review Board and ensure that all of that knowledge is passed on. As far as education of design, we would provide the, the successful board members with a copy of the design manual and point to those, those certain provisions. And that essentially is what the Design Review Board compares each project to.
Right.
The design manual.
Yes.
So we would make sure that the candidates have all the information necessary.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. I think we will have an answer out to you sometime later in this afternoon or early tomorrow.
Terrific, that would be great.
Thank you again for your time.
Bye, Tom, thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye, thanks.
Now, I'll just apologize again for the record, now recording, but that was, that was my mistake, that he had the wrong time. I sent him two different times and he picked the wrong one, so that one's on me. But for Mr. Bradbury, he's got the right information, I'm not sure why he's not joining us.
No dessert for you tonight, Josh.
I know, I don't get dinner anyway, so.
So are we done? Are we going to make a decision today? Are we going to wait for this other gentleman? Are we going to wait for Larry or are we going to?
I think that's up to you as the committee. I can get ahold of Larry later and see if we can reschedule or we can make the decision now or we can defer the decision to next month when hopefully we have other candidates. I think it's kind of up to the committee to decide. Katrina could weigh in too, because it kind of affects her ability to conduct business.
Yes, please. Yeah, I would like to hear what Katrina and Brett both have to say.
Brett, did you want to go first?
Aw, I was gonna let you go first.
I would suggest that we keep, that we keep these open to look for or interview additional candidates. I, potentially, Mr. Bradbury could have had an emergency situation and been able to come. So I do think it would, I would recommend that at minimum, we interview Mr. Bradbury as well, potentially keep it open until your meeting next month if we have additional candidates to interview.
I concur.
Yeah, and I'd like to get a little bit more time to get the opportunity to get that message out about the landscaping desire and candidates.
Yes, and I'll work with Josh on that.
Yeah, any ideas that you have for, for getting the word out there are helpful. We kind of just reel out our website, which doesn't have the, the most reach. And our Facebook account, it goes out on Facebook too, but.
I think personal outreach helps if anyone can think of anyone.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we have a built-in recess here until four o'clock, we have Parks Commission interviews, so if you want to.
Okay.
Back into recess now, we can do that.
Sure, let's take a 20-minute break.
Thank you.
All right, we return to our Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee Meeting for Monday, July 12, 2021. Time is 4:08 PM and we are joined by Jeff Langhelm, who is our Public Works Director. Thank you. Shall we bring the new candidate, next candidate in for the Parks Commission?
I'm having some difficulty, oh, here. I can give him the ability to talk, but I am not able to transfer him over for some reason.
Okay, Mr. Brown, if, we can hear you, sir, thank you.
Sorry for the delay, I'm home with a little one today, he's got the, the runny nose and all that fun stuff, so apologize.
You'll have it soon.
I've had it all weekend.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Mike, do you mind if we call you, Mike?
Sure, yeah, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. If you're, if you're ready, we will start the questions.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, let me just scroll down here. Where am I at? I'm sorry. I lost my questions. Jenny, if you want to, or Councilmember Wook, if you would mind taking question one and I'll.
You bet, you bet. Good morning, good afternoon, Mike, I'm Jenny Wook, I sit on the City Council, position one. So first question, please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Parks Commission.
Sure, so my name's Mike Healy, we recently relocated to the area, we're from New Jersey originally and work took us out here, so it's been an interesting journey. And basically, I thought it would be a good thing to do because my daughter and I are like, we're crazy park people. We go probably to like, three parks a day and my wife is always telling me, I need to chill out in the parks. So I'm a big park person, I love parks and where we come from, there's just an absolutely, we're very blessed, we're very blessed, rather, county park system. And so I just have a lot of, I guess, experience going to a lot of different parks and seeing a lot of great things at work and just thought I might be able to share some of those ideas over here with you guys, you know, in any capacity that could be helpful.
That's great. How long have you been in here, in Gig Harbor?
So we've been in Gig Harbor now for, I guess, it's been a month and we started off in Fox Island and we just, we were looking for a house, it just took that long, you know? So we've been here since April in, in the area.
Well, great, have a lot of fun as we get to know our community, our parks.
I'm having a blast, it's, it's nice, yeah, thank you.
Good.
And Mike, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role?
So not the Park Commission, I mean, I'm familiar with like, is it, I think it's Penn Park and things like that, like we've been, you know, just kind of doing a lot of research. Like I said, my, my daughter and I are like big park people, she's accustomed to going to a lot of parks, I mean, trying to research and learn and we've been hitting all the local spots and stuff. But no, I'm not entirely familiar with the role. I did a little reading online, looks like essentially it's just sort of, I guess, give ideas and from a community member standpoint is my understanding, but.
Okay, Councilmember Denson?
Yes, all right, well, welcome to Gig Harbor, Michael. I see you're in the FBI, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you know Eric Reese?
That name is familiar to me, I'm from New Jersey.
No, he was here, he was like the whole regional director, but he just moved to New York, he and his family, so.
That might be why I know his name, yeah. We're, New York and New Jersey, there's a lot of tie over, but no, I don't think I've ever met him.
He was, he was awesome and I'm sure, sure you'll love Gig Harbor as much as his and his family did, I hope so. Okay, so my question is, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role? Did you just ask that, Jenny, or?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
You're on number three.
All right, Sid, you'll be able to answer this one. What is your favorite Gig Harbor city park and why and how could it be improved?
Okay, um, so I guess like a two-part, right? So my favorite one right now would be the Veteran Memorial Park, I like that one the most. But I think the park that has like the most potential is Crescent Park, which has the really awesome ship on it. And I really like that park a lot. I think if it had a little touch of like what they did at Memorial, like sort of like, maybe like a little more advanced playground there, it would help with the kids. Because like, right now, the park, it's super cool and I love the boat and it's like a good educational piece for like the kids. But then my daughter's kind of like, all right, so now like where's the big slide, you know, where's like the morph, where's the swing or something, you know? And then there's this really awesome, like sandbox type thing, but my wife is like, that's more like a dirt box, we're not letting her play up there. So, you know, so like, I see that park and I'm like, man, this park is so awesome, it just needs like a few little things and maybe like, I don't know, like a volunteer effort with the community, like it doesn't need, I don't think like a big cost situation as much as maybe just like getting some people together who have, I don't know, like a will and some skills and just kind of like, you know, change the dirt into sand, so to speak, and things like that. So yeah, that, that's my thought on that. I love that park, I think it has awesome potential.
Okay.
So Mike, what do you feel are the major issues the Parks Commission should be focusing on?
Well, I guess that all depends on like, you know, what the community's appetite is for like, you know, spending money. But I think you guys have some really awesome stuff going on here, like Kids' Gag behind Discovery Elementary. I don't know how many people know about that place. In part, I want nobody to know about it, but then I'm thinking to myself, like, that is just the coolest park in the, like, you know, playset in this town, right? And I think like some, some stuff like that in other areas would, would be like just incredible for kids and stuff, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and then I would say this too, I don't know, and this is something I have to get to know better, I'm sure there's stuff I'm just unaware of, but, um, we were blessed in Monmouth County in New Jersey where some very, very wealthy people donated like unbelievable amount of acres, like hundreds of acres to the county park system. So that being said, they had some really great trail systems, believe it or not, in very urban New Jersey. And I told my wife, the funny thing is, like, right here in the Pacific Northwest and like, I miss the trails of New Jersey, you know? So I don't know, like if there's like some, some places to go around here and maybe, like I said, I just need to do some more learning about that, but I missed like kind of, we have this like wagon thing, we used to put my daughter in and you kind of like push through these, like, they're, they're dirt, but they're maintained, you know, by, by the county system or whatever, like trail systems. And so I've seen that, that, it seems like there's a lot of stuff here for like five and older, you know, like, but when they're really little, it, the, in terms of like long trails and stuff, there aren't many options that I'm aware of yet, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Mike, the Parks Commission meets monthly on the first Wednesday at 5:30 PM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending meetings?
Unless something emergency style came up at work, which is rare, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
And Councilmember Denson, last question?
Oh, okay, do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions for us about the Parks Commission? And then before you answer, I'll just make sure you're aware, over in the Key Peninsula, they have something called the 360 Trails that you might want to check out. And then we also, over here, it's not in the city, but the Penn Met has McCormick Woods Trails, so you might want to check those out for trails.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, eager to check out 360. I saw that recently and it looks like it's going to be super cool. That, that reminds me kind of like what we had, you know, back home a little bit, so yeah, I'm excited to check that out. In terms of questions, no, I mean, I guess I'm just mostly curious if I'm, if I'm correct in that, I guess, we're more or less like, going to be providing input from a community member perspective, you know, as it relates to what you guys have available for, for budget or whatever, you know, making decisions, is that essentially what it is?
Yeah, so the Parks Commission is to advise the mayor and city council on park and recreation facilities, open space, open space acquisition and development, maintenance and operation of parks and recreation, public and recreation, public facilities, common. Operation of parks and recreation programs and other matters is directed by the City Council.
So like, would we at all, or would, would the council be interested in like, people like me trying to help drum up like support within like the business community for pitching in on some of this stuff? Because like back home, like, and every, every place is different, has its own flavor, you know? But like back home, a lot of times there was intermingling there, you know, like, you have that beautiful harbor and that great like waterfront there. And I know the businesses all closed earlier here than they did back home, but like I was surprised to learn that, like on the Fourth of July, for example, the, like, the Rotary isn't. But like I was surprised to learn that like on the Fourth of July, for example, the like the Rotary isn't more like, yeah, let's host some sort of Fourth of July thing and get everybody here. So they spent a bunch of money buying ice cream and cotton candy and whatever it is, you know, the they had that cafe there that that does the, you know, the pottery stuff like it almost seemed like a missed commerce opportunity for them. That maybe like they would be a little interested in like kind of teaming up with the Parks Commission and maybe, you know, hosting stuff and, you know, connection with each other to sort of drum up commerce. Because it's such a amazing space. Me, my daughter and I like that harbor, like, like before I brought her to the harbor. I'm sorry. She used to ask to go home all the time. Which hurt hurt me a little bit, you know, but. Um, sorry. I'm an emotional person. Apologize. But the harbor is awesome. And so, you know, like, I just think it's a great opportunity. And I think it would be awesome if somehow there was a way to tap the, you know, the business community and and get them to promote some like pretty awesome stuff there. So anyway, I don't know if that's something that we would potentially have a role in helping to facilitate.
I think potentially I'll jump in and I'll just let you know, you guys have just been here and you were here through COVID. So you'll see a lot more downtown. The Waterfront Alliance puts on a ton of events downtown. The Chamber puts on a big maritime gig fest, August twenty first and twenty second. So that is exactly what you're talking about. And then there's there's been talk of doing something for the Fourth of July, like a street fair. So I know that the marketing director for the city is looking into something like that, too. But all summer long, typically, there is stuff going on in the harbor in collaboration with the business community. And so, yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, always always could use more, but yeah.
Yeah.
And so we are of the Parks Commission and the city are also looking to develop a adopt a park program.
Yeah, there you go.
Organizations to contribute to. But in addition to what council member Benson said, there's also the movies in the park, of course, the concerts in the park, the maritime parade, gig parade is a big event. And then there's also all kinds of little kind of specialty things, ladies night out shopping. And we do some art walks.
Yeah, my wife is super stoked for Halloween here.
Awesome downtown. It is the best. It's like my favorite thing downtown. It's so fun.
Yeah, there's this really awesome magazine I recently found. It's like Gig Harbor Focus that has a bunch of events and stuff. So I had been noticing that there's going to be a lot of regular stuff, which looks really exciting. You know, started looking into. So, yeah, cool. Well, yeah, that was that was my main curiosity was just knowing whether or not there was like an appetite for for that type of stuff. So it sounds like there is, which is exciting.
Thank you, Mike. If you have any other last questions, otherwise we'll wrap up and get to our next candidate. And we should be getting to you with an answer, hopefully by the end of this day or early tomorrow sometime.
Great, yeah, thanks. And again, I apologize for the tardiness. Kind of lost track of time in the day. It was a little crazy, but. So it was great meeting you all.
Take care of your little.
Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Goodbye.
Did you say he was in the FBI, Rob?
I read that on his his application.
Yeah.
I didn't. I didn't see any of the application things. Do we have our next candidate, Mr. Barker Baker?
Yeah, Pete Baker. He should have just come over to the panel. So you should see him now.
There we go. Good afternoon, Mr. Baker. Thank you for joining us. Can you hear us? Mr. Baker, can you hear us?
You can mute and unmute, but I'm not picking up any sound.
Yeah, I don't see his mute button on.
You hear me now?
Yep, there we go. You're a little faint, but we can hear you.
Good to hear. I'll I'll try to speak up.
There you go. Thank you, sir. And if you're ready, we'll jump into the questions.
That sounds great.
Let me just scroll down here. And Mr. Baker, do you mind if we call you Peter?
Not at all.
Thank you, Peter. Peter, please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Parks Commission.
I'm Pete Baker. I've grown up in the harbor. I've been here since grade school. I went to Artinale, Discovery, Kelpfut, Gate Harbor. So I've kind of been all over the place. I have now settled down here with my wife. We have three kids, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen. I've played a lot of sports, so I've I've used the parks like crazy. From Jerrisich to all the sports parks, Donkey Creek, you name it. I push my kids to do the same. We we try to enjoy parks as a family as much as we can. With as long as I have lived here, I've seen the parks grow up. I've seen them get better. And I'd like to see that continue. I'd like to to be a stronger part of my community if possible. And this is a good way to to kind of make that happen. I've I've known Ben Coronado, who I know is part of this for quite some time. He and I have been friends for almost thirty years. And so we've talked about some of the things that the commission does and, you know, some of the focuses and and just kind of talked about how we can, you know, make things better for everyone around us. So, yeah, that that's kind of me in a nutshell and why I think they're talking with you today.
So that sounds great. I'm Jenny Look, sit on the city council. So Peter, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role? And it sounds like you do, since you and Ben have been talking. What have you been talking about concerning the Parks Commission, if you've been chatting amongst the two of you? What what has it been about?
Mostly about how the parks were as we were growing up, to how they've changed since. When we just had, when we were growing up, you had the city park, you had Jerrisich, you had Donkey Creek, and that was about it, you know, at that time. And now we've got parks like Zamo and we've got all the sports parks that are starting to pop up and things like that. So it's really kind of seeing how the parks, you know, commission and and the parks themselves are grilling or are being a better source for for our community. Yeah, just making the harbor a better place to be.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter, I'm Robin Denson on council. And my question is, what is your favorite Gig Harbor City Park? Why and how could it be improved?
I mean, I would probably say Jerrisich, just because, I mean, is there a better place to be on a summer day, a summer night? Take your pick. It's beautiful. There's, it's always full of people that are just having fun, you know, whether there's picnics going on, whether there's concerts down in the park, whether you're just dipping your toes off the end of the pier. As as far as making it better, it'd be great to have more parking around there and things like that, obviously, to expand the park if possible. I know, you know, real estate is pretty limited down there. But just making it more accessible for people and also safer for people. I know that some of those, some of those crosswalks can be a little dicey.
Thank you.
And Peter, the Parks Commission meets monthly on the first Wednesday at five thirty. Oh wait, I'm sorry, wrong question. What do you feel are the major issues the Parks Commission should be focusing on?
Well, I would say that's a tough one, really. As I said, with Jerrisich, I think it's, there's a lot of safety and things like that around there. When you've got some of the other parks that are a little more off the beaten path, I would say probably just upkeep. Make sure that, you know, like they're they're suitable drainage, so it doesn't get swampy when kids are playing out there and things like that. Also, I mean, just just your standard upkeep and, you know, making making sure that parks are beautiful as they always have been.
So Peter, the Parks Commission meets monthly on the first Wednesday at five thirty P M. Do you have any other commitments that would attend that would stop you from attending these meetings?
I do not. They're happily.
Good.
Okay. And then the last question, Peter, is do you have anything you'd like to add or any questions for us about the Parks Commission?
Nothing I can think of off the top of my head. As I said, Ben and I talk quite a bit. As I've been around the community long enough just to kind of see what's been happening with parks over the last, you know, thirty five, forty years, so.
Right. Okay.
All right, Peter, we should have an answer for you, hopefully by the end of today or early tomorrow. We'd like to thank you for your time today. And I promise as a graduate of Harbor Heights, Goodman and Peninsula, I won't hold your educational standards against you.
Well, my brother-in-law is Brian Toley, so I think you've probably, you may have even had been in his class at one point.
Okay, cool. Thank you today.
I appreciate it, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. Bye.
Okay, how about Mr. Appleton? Is he in our waiting room?
He was just on and dropped off. Lost him somehow. He was joining us by phone, so maybe he had a bad connection. Give him a minute to see if he can get back on.
Josh, do we have one or two positions on the Parks Commission open?
Only one.
One.
Should be good. Mr. Appleton back here in just a moment.
Thank you, Josh.
I promise that one of these days, this meeting will go smoothly, but.
Oh, it's fine.
Don't hold me to it.
Your fault.
If I was doing this job, I'd have no hair at all. It would have been all pulled out. And I would have thrown everything in this office around the room, so. I I bow down to your technical abilities, really.
Okay, it looks like we have him on the line. I've given him the ability to talk. You may need to unmute. Mr. Appleton, if you can hear me. I think it's star six on your phone. Or possibly star nine.
And Mr. Appleton, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you. We need you to unmute, please. Looks like you're trying to unmute, maybe.
All right.
There you are.
There we go.
Mr. Appleton, we can hear you. You can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent, sir. Thank you for your time. Mr. Appleton, do you mind if we call you Bill?
I actually go by Will or William?
William. How about Will then?
Will's good.
Thank you, sir. Will, please introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Parks Commission.
Yeah, so my name is William Appleton. I've been a resident in the city of Gig Harbor now for going on about years. I work for work in municipal government and have worked in municipal government for about twenty years. Have extensive background in that. And my interest in joining the commission is really because I haven't served the the city of Gig Harbor. Spent a lot of time thinking about other cities and improving them and trying to create an environment that caters to those residents and improves their lives. And so, yeah, I think this is a good opportunity to to do something for the community that I live in, but I don't work for.
Can you pass me?
Sure. And Will, do you have any knowledge of the Parks Commission and its role?
I have. I have an understanding of the Parks Commission and its role. It's it's limited. I'm assuming that this is a commission that's basically an advisory group to the to the council and reviews parks-related issues and matters and provides recommendations for council consideration.
Very good. Okay, well, my name is Robin Denson. I'm a member of city council. And my question is, what is your favorite Gig Harbor City Park? Why and how could it be improved?
I would, I would say my favorite park is Eden Eden Boat. And the reason for that is it's very near my house and I actually use that park to swim in the harbor. So I spend a fair amount of, well, actually a short period of time there and then swim and find myself back at the park. But I think it's a great park. I use it a lot. How could it be improved? You know, I think I I believe, you know, I I'm amazed by the foresight of previous council members in establishing the parks that we have. I think it's outstanding. I think Eden Boat could be potentially approved by purchase of the of the property, the forested property that would be eh, kind of to the north, north of Eden. I've seen it for sale on multiple accounts. But understanding that it may have been recently purchased. But I think expansion of that park to provide even more access to the water and to a to an environment where people can take a respite from the from the busy workday and those people who walk along the waterfront. I think any additional waterfront property for use as parks would be benefit to the city, its citizens and and those visiting the city.
And Will, what do you, or I'm sorry, yeah, what do you feel are the major issues the Parks Commission should be focusing on?
Um, I, you know, I believe that the Parks Commission should be focused on making sure that the parks that we have are properly maintained. making sure that the parks that we have are properly maintained and operated, that they continue to add the value to the community that they do. That's that's probably paramount, making sure the funding is in place to do that. I think educational and outreach opportunities, as they make themselves available, should be another priority, given that we have parks that, you know, range from just forest walks to marine environments. I think there's some outstanding opportunities for that as well as recreation. And and I think the other, you know, the other key thing to really be looking out for are are there opportunities to expand or improve our parks? Where, you know, we can look for additional properties, we can look for, you know, utilizing parks in maybe a different, in a slightly different way. So with 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 the eye always on the future, so while something may not seem, you know, something that we could swallow today, but always thinking out, what is it going to be twenty years from now? What, how, you know, how will this benefit the community in the long term? So making sure that we're not just having a short-term view of things.
Okay.
So the Parks Commission meets monthly on the first Wednesday at five thirty P. M. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending these meetings?
No, I do not.
Thanks, Will.
And then, Will, the final question is, do you have anything you'd like to add or questions for us about the Parks Commission?
So I would be I would be excited to to serve on this commission. It would be the first time I've ever served on a commission. Like I said, I've worked for city government for a long time. And I would be honored to be able to to serve my own community and try to help make it even better for for residents today and residents in the future. And my my one question, I guess, to the group I would ask is, so my experience with commissions has been that really they're reviewing what's brought to them. Is this position also, or this group, this body, are they also coming about with their own recommendations that they're they're meeting, discussing, talking? Or are they always vetting recommendations or always vetting topics that are brought to them by staff? That would be my question.
I'd say it's a healthy mixture of both. I've only been an observer for about a year on the Parks Commission. And some of it is, you know, coming from the city. And then, like this adopt a park program, this is something I think the the commission has been brought is bringing to the council. I don't know. I can't speak to the past, but I'd say it's a pretty healthy mix. Councilmember Denson, you've served on the Parks Commission, haven't you?
Yeah, I think because a lot of times they'll have even citizens come and during public comment, they'll come with ideas to the Parks Commission. It starts, you know, at the Parks Commission, and then it might go on to the Arts Commission or planning, and eventually to City Council. Probably the best person to answer this, though, is our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham. Jeff, do you want to weigh in?
Sure, I will.
Jeff.
So, yeah, it primarily there's a work plan that we try and put together every year. We don't always get a work plan put together, but it's a consensus document that is often started by the Parks Commission about what topics they want to work on. And then the council will approve or modify the work plan accordingly. But there's there's quite a bit of grassroots effort from Parks Commission members on some things. And then generally, just the council has to approve those as they proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
No questions. Yeah, just no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, and we will have an answer for you sometime later today or early tomorrow.
I bet. Thank you. Apologize for for the having to phone call in. I I thought I could make it on the commute, but I got had to pull over, so apologize for that.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Bye.
All right. Have a good evening.
So I have a question. Is this Emily's husband?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Who's Emily?
Yeah.
Emily Appleton. She was our senior engineer here until about four years ago.
Oh, okay. It did sound familiar.
Yeah.
You know what he does in other in the other government positions that he holds?
He he works. He's the Public Works Director for the City of Sea Tech.
Okay.
Okay. So on the DRB, obviously, Tom Brown, and we're going to keep the other, are we going to keep looking for position? I can't remember what we
So I thought they asked us to keep that position open until we had more applicants. Is that what I heard, Robin?
Yep. And maybe we can come back next month and consider.
Right.
Okay. So then on the Parks Commission, we do we need to take a vote?
I'd like to ask Jeff a couple more questions, because I was very impressed with Will Appleton. But I'd like to know what you think. How do you think another Public Works Director, sitting on a Parks Commission? How do you think that would work?
Well, there's definitely some benefits to that. He has some good insight of expectations. But then, you know, the downside con to that would be that he has some, maybe some constraints that might he perceives, but might not really be there. You bring somebody in, the first guy, first one was Mike, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's comes in, comes in from out of the state. He's got some great ideas of what they do in Jersey. And, you know, what, what, how much of that can you bring here? Well, there's some benefit. I mean, it's always benefit to bring some new blood into the conversation. But there's also a lot of benefit to having some people that have been around a while and and understand what it's about. It's really, I guess, the direction the council would like to go. If you want to bring in some new blood, I definitely think that Mike was very knowledgeable and had a lot of energy. But Will has a lot of understanding of how how this works and has been, I mean, he said twenty years. Yeah, he's been here for twenty years. He knows knows a lot of the ins and outs of Gig Harbor.
And how about Peter?
Yeah, I would say Peter was somewhere in the middle. He has been around for a very long time. He might not have the understanding of how things work, but he definitely has. He's he's locked in and engaged on what he likes and and, I mean, you you heard what he said. He wants to Jerisich Park is the one park that he likes the most. And and, I mean, maybe he wants to see that these things stay the way they are. I don't know. I didn't get a sense of that one way or the other.
Well, he swims in the harbor. That says something right there.
Yikes.
Yeah. Well, he obviously believes that the harbor is cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I really liked William Appleton. I thought that his, I like the things that he had to say about maintaining and operating and how important that is to the Parks Commission, rather than just going and building and making new. You have to take care of what you've got. So that's that was who I like the best. Michael, Mike Kelly, I thought he was pretty good, but he's only lived here a month. So for me, I'd rather have somebody who's on the on any of our commissions longer than a month. So that's how I that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I thought they were all great, and I hope that they all come back to apply, because I think all of them would be excellent. I love Michael's energy and ideas and yeah, I'm so glad he's here, but I share Jenny's concern, not concern, but just good if somebody's here just a little bit longer, I think. But he would be great, and I know he'd be an asset. And, yeah, Peter, he definitely knows the area, grew up in all the schools, and I liked, I think I would have been very happy with him on the Parks Commission. Will's my choice as well, because even though I like them all, it's tough. But we have a number of people on the Parks Commission that are newer residents, like Roger and Mary, and there may even be more. So I think we have quite a bit of new blood, and I like the idea that Will understands how city government works. He understands what Jeff has to deal with when things, you know, do get put into motion. But he also had a vision for the future, and I loved how he talked about expanding parks, purchasing things with an eye for the future. And I really love that, because if we don't protect some of our forests and shoreline, whatever we can now, you know, we're not going to get a chance to later. So I really liked that. So, yeah, I think he's my he's my top choice, too.
I concur a lot with all those. I thought there was three very excellent candidates, and I wish we had three spots opening, because I'd like to get them all.
We'll have more, though. It seems like there's always spots opening.
Right. I do share councilmember Wook's thoughts on Mr. Kylie. But I did really appreciate his comments. After, you know, he said he'd only been here a month, I was like, oh, well, you know, but then he really opened up and and what he said I thought was very appealing. I agree that Mr. Appleton's experience would definitely benefit the board. And but I myself, I'm going to go with Peter, just because, again, he is a lifelong citizen like myself. He's been here since elementary school and probably born here. And, you know, obviously, Ben probably encouraged him to get on the board as well. So that's that's where I would go, but put it to the vote.
So I would nominate William Appleton.
I will second that and hope that Peter applies again.
Yes, yes, and absolutely. Tell them all to come back and apply again. Absolutely. They're all very good. And I think once Michael lives here for a year, so, you know, he's going to understand what we have and what how his great ideas can fit in. And and I think that's great to have that new blood. I just really think people should live in Gig Harbor a little bit before. Last time, remember, we had somebody who was just moving here at the time. He didn't even live here. He was in the car on the way driving here. And and so it was like, oh, come on, live here for a little bit anyway. But these are all three, three excellent, three excellent folks.
And we know their names, and we know they're interested. And then when they come back next time, we'll be like, okay.
Right. Okay, so I guess we will tell Mr. Appleton that he has carried the day and get in touch with him.
I can let him know probably tomorrow morning, because the council meeting fired up right after this.
All right, do we have any other business to attend to?
None for me.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. See you in forty minutes or so.
Bye, everybody.